Is struck. Uh oh, uh oh. Sorry. Should I start over?
Go ahead.
Okay, so no rear fence wall or hedge and no side fence wall or hedge located between the side building line and the interior lot line or located on the interior lot line should shall be more than, and it used to read six and we changed it to eight. We decided that we should not strike hedge there because at the point that you strike hedge, you can allow for 12-foot hedges at that point. And if the if the purpose of this is to maintain a sightline that if you take hedge out and people are not required to keep their hedging at eight feet, then it would cause a problem. So those were the two recommendations that came from us.
Okay, so what what happens here according to my notes is that in your handout, Councilmember Grummer, in paragraph D, during in the middle where it says with fences are prohibited on lot lines, that actually becomes paragraph C.
And then everything gets.
And then everything else gets bumped down until we go to G in that case. And then there was one change then that would be at the end of paragraph C where it says six feet, it would be eight feet. So there's there's two places where six feet became eight feet. And then we just split that paragraph B into two paragraphs and we relettered them. And I have one note from the meeting. Pretty simple.
Yeah, but I mean, the only thing that we felt like was a kind of a gray area with that striking of the hedges. And we felt like you really shouldn't strike the hedges if your eye, you know, if you want to keep the sightline between the houses. And that's it.
So that is the report. And we'll come back to we'll come back to fences.
Man, we had to call our public.
Yeah, there we go, number eight, I'm sorry, it's number eight. So we'll come back to on number eight, we'll bring fences back up again. If there is no further discussion on that, we'll do to the report by the city manager.
Yeah, it'll be really short. In your package, just a activity tracker on a monthly basis. It's going to be on a each month, we're going to compile some numbers to kind of show what activity we've had here at City Hall. And it'll be a month over month, year over year kind of numbers, just kind of how many permits we did, have some traffic information, emails we put out, we talked to the Hayes County Activity Report from the sheriff's office. And so this will be kind of a update, it'll be updated each month and kind of when we find some more pertinent information, we'll include it on there, too.
Yeah, we're not having that in check in the line. This is brilliant.
Love it.
Really good.
We'll add more stuff. We may fix the file or add stuff, but if y'all have any suggestions, let me know. And we'll try to, if we can track them, we'll track them.
Good work, Stat.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I remember a few months back, there was a request for residents if they wanted to offer essentially their property or their driveway for the sheriffs to sit. Whatever came of that.
We have, we we have sent that to Hayes County, to the coordinator, to give to the sheriffs that come into the city to work. So they have a list of all of those addresses.
Whether or not. Five stop signs, what like usually people are slowing down anyway, so it'd be better we get.
Right, no, we we gave it to them. We can't tell them where to sit, but we did get that to them and we have told them. So it, you know, it's kind of on their judgment if they want to go there and if they think it's a viable spot or not. But it has been relayed to them in the email, the whole list of addresses. So don't be surprised if you see it in someplace new.
All right, then I guess we can move on to the regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda is presentation by Dr. Joseph Kachaba on the Friends of Wood Creek.
Okay. It's great to be here, but it seems like about 10 years since I was sitting with y'all this year. And I really miss it, I really do. But and I'm not here to ask for anything, I'm here to just kind of give you an update on what's been happening in the process of setting up a nonprofit foundation, Friends of Wood Creek. And that process is in process right now, so I'm going to give you an update, not just any final conclusions on things. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, this idea kind of started, at least I was conscious of this idea going back, I guess, to 2022, when I ran for a council. And at the time, the the message I was getting clear is to be a candidate, you need to know what you want to do, what's your what's your agenda like, what's your platform like. And I was thinking, well, wait a minute, what what would I say I would do if I were to be a council member? And looking around, I'm saying, now, wait a minute now, we've got these streets under control now, got new streets, they're not streets, they're roads. I make that clear to people who ask me about that. They say you have new streets in Wood Creek, they're roads. A street is something you take to go from here to there. A road is something you take to enjoy the trip. And to pass City Hall without trying to avoid the potholes, that's pleasant, that's pleasurable. So I'm thinking, what what is what what is Wood Creek? You know, what do I make of Wood Creek? And I and I think the conceptualized struck me at the time is that it's really a pretty mature city. You know, it's not that old retirement town on weekends, or it's not an old golf course town, or it's not an old anything. It's something kind of different. And I was thinking more and more about how there's not really much more you can say we need, we need to do that's not already being done. We've got those roads and we got, everything's under control, the city manager is running everything, telling me what, interpreting the laws to me the other day, am I disadvantaged? That's okay. But what what I'm thinking is that if it's a mature city, what we want to think about doing is not to do the things that y'all are doing up there. And that's taking care of the big stuff. Okay? And and you've been very successful doing that. You've even gotten to the point where the monitor works with the computer and it works on time, and that's a major achievement. And so in thinking about what a foundation could do, it came to mind that in a word, in a couple of words, it seems that what we could work for is to improve quality of life. Do some things not above and beyond what government's doing, but different kind of stuff that's not really, you know, a top the top agenda item for City Hall, perhaps, or something that would be important to residents. Okay? And so the vision statement that I, the way I see it now is the Friends of Wood Creek Foundation's vision is to serve as a citizens initiative to enhance the quality of life for Wood Creek's residents. Key term, citizens. And that's really kind of how we're forming the organization now in terms of just going and working with citizens per se directly. And so next slide, please. And with the help of two of my really good partners in this process, Cheryl and Claire, we all know who they are, they're just great, wording this the way they say should be worded in terms of who we are. We are facilitators, we help raise resources through gifts, donations, endowments, and fundraising events, a major, if not a key feature of a foundation, raising resources. And that's pretty much the scope of things we're going to be going after. We are stewards. I like that word, that's kind of like an old guy kind of word, the way to put it, right? Talk about that shirt, talk about it at school. Now, we're stewards now of this community, pretty scary. We are dedicated to preserving the history and natural beauty of the Wood Creek community and celebrating the tremendous contributions all generations of residents have given to us. And one thing about a mature community is the sense and understanding that there's all generations living here. And the thought that, well, we're becoming a young community, we're becoming a family community. Well, the numbers really don't show that all that much. We're a mixture of a lot of different kinds of people, and that's something we're trying to keep in mind in our work as stewards. We are investors, we are focused on our future as a community. We finance projects that help develop the community of Wood Creek socially, culturally, aesthetically, ecologically, securely, and memorably. Couldn't put any more on that list, everything's pretty much up there. But we're a lot of different things, and I think one of the features of a foundation is to kind of keep that in mind, that there's a lot of different kinds of things that should should be happening over here. Next slide, please. So putting a foundation together, I read up on this, talked to people who do this kind of thing, talked to the mayor, who was very helpful all along the line, discussing these things with me. And we had it, of course, apply for a 501(c)(3). And that became a learning lesson for me that I'm still maybe in the first quarter of, it's quite a job. And to get to 501(c)(3) is going to take time, I'm told, and got to know what you're doing. So since I didn't know what I was doing, I got some expertise. And what I did, I'll get to this in a little minute, is to get an advisor to help me work on this. And the first thing I had to do was to get some people to help pay for its advisor. Okay? And so what I did was to pass the hat, and this is the list of people, the original donors to the foundation, residents only, keeping it local at for the point now. And Jay Little, very generous, Jack Posey, you know, Jack, right? Just a super guy. Got on the phone to talk to Frank Silverlight, the executive director, Camp Young Judea. I know Frank from Houston, because his headquarters are in Delaware. And I know him from, you know, coaching little kids' basketball over at the J, Jewish Community Center. Now, he didn't remember me and I really didn't remember him, but I can say that. And he was also part of this, gave us money. Greg Posey, manager, Hill Country Liquors, we all know Greg. Joe Gambino got on board, owner, Double J Ranch Golf Club. So I'm really proud to say that, I don't know what kind of leader I am on this group, but I really know how to put together a board. I'll take credit for that. So I've got two senior members, if you will, of the community, three of the more important invisible business people in town. You got to have those guys in, right? And finally, I was able to get two more members, so we have an uneven number, Claire Palmer and Cheryl Mills, y'all know them, right? You got to know them. I asked them to get on the board for a couple of reasons. One, there's nobody in town that has that type of energy like those two women got. You know, I just think exhausted being around them. There's also, there's no one in town that's that busy. I mean, always working doing things, between gardens and school and everything else. And the best advice I got was put people on the board who are doers. That's what you want, people are going to take care of the work and know how to do it. And so Claire and Cheryl, for example, have been really good setting up communications for the for the foundation, Facebooks and stuff like this, with the good help of Councilman Robert over here, who helped us out a lot setting up those things. And so the board's been in operation. Now, we haven't been doing anything official, because we're not an official group. But I thought it would be useful to start talking as a group, to start learning how to talk with each other. And that's been working out really, really well. And so we've been doing Zooms, and especially since we've got a member of the board from out of town, that's been working really well. Next slide, please. You're my head. And so out of this group of founders, if you will, of the foundation, four of them have remained as board members. Okay, Greg, Joe, Claire, and Cheryl. And the others are too busy and doing other things and said, get some of those young people the energies to get involved on this. So that's what we've been doing. And so the five of us have been meeting pretty regularly since since January. Okay, 501(c) advisory. The gentleman who's been processing the application for us also happens to be the director of Gibson Development for the Business School of Texas State, where I teach. And so like, I got the top guy to do this, and he's been great, taking care of all the paperwork, I don't have to ask him what to do, because everything was being done. He missed our last Zoom meeting that he already agreed to meet with the board, talk about fundraising. And I'm saying, oh, how come this guy's not showing up? I'm getting a little peeved. So he's not answering emails. I looked into the homepage for the Business School to find his office phone number, got his number, call up, and his secretary answers and says, Mr. Hamilton passed away last week. Status news, ever. And decides that, you know, now I got to find out where all our paperwork is and everything else, which I'm not going to do for a while, obviously. Man of 59 years old, twin boys in high school, wife, church, whole, you know, leaving to be or seeing a scenario for a family, and had a heart attack at 59. So we're very sad about that. And got to be close to him, even though we never met him that much in face, we had nice meetings with the mayor for a while. So next slide, please. So we're going to hold our breath until we see where that 501(c)(3) comes in, and that's when we're going to be, I think, prepped to start firing up some of these activities. Now, next slide, please. Ideas. No actions again, no decisions. We're being conservatively slowing what we're doing. But what I put together here is a list of the kinds of ideas that we've been playing with, and I've been kind of thinking quite a bit about in terms of directions the foundation can go. And this is just a working list, obviously. First idea, a fundraising golf tournament at Double J's. An idea that came from the mayor in fact, but also came from Joe Gambino. He said, yeah, little golf tournament, raise all your money. It just sounds like a play in the East. I like, I like about business people, you know, they just do things like that. So that's going to be one of our earlier activities, probably. Now, the one activity I've been talking up with people that's received most interest in, maybe strangely enough, is my idea for coffee cake and concert activity, we've talked about this, to be held for seniors at Camp Young Judea. Seniors, you know who a senior citizen is? Anybody over the 1 million. There's more below me than I've.
You're only 29, come on.
So here's the idea, we're we're thinking and discussing like, well, you know, we don't do a whole lot for seniors in our community. And that's not bad, seniors are keeping themselves pretty busy, this is not a passive kind of retirement community by any sense of word. It'd be nice to do something for them, but also for fundraising purposes, too. And so this is an event that we will probably hold over at the at the camp, Young Judea. They've already offered us space for doing these kind of things. And it would take place probably 1:00 in the afternoon. Now, 1:00 is an interesting time, because someday y'all are going to learn that that's when you start taking your nap. And so once we do this, they can do, take their nap afterwards, or we can take their nap afterwards. And so that coffee and cake, that's what you do at 1:00, you'll find that out, too, someday. And but the concert would be something that would be simple, it would be relatively modest. What I've been looking into is having something to the effect of a trio or a quartet, string quartet, to come play mellow music in the afternoon with coffee and cake.
And then everybody would be asleep. Everybody would go to sleep.
Hopefully they will, that's the goal of the policy. We only achieve that, yes. So that's going to be down the line, it's going to be a relatively expensive activity, easy to pull off, local, people would walk to it. Yeah. And inaugural with elegant wine and cheese cocktail hour, to be planned, something you go and, you know, charge people to do this, and do a fancy PowerPoint and everything else. We can do this either at the golf course, if they're done, but they will probably all be done in the time to this, or at the community, at the camp. An event celebrating artists and musicians who reside and work in Wood Creek, but who rarely are acknowledged as neighbors, coming for brief conversation with Chris Grummer. We we'd said about two cents of this on the phone, talking about Facebooks. And it just kind of struck me like, yeah, this is a, this is something that would be cool to do, to do cultural activities here in Wood Creek. Now, we're certainly very heavily engaged and dedicated to really arts, or not or, and they're great. But I've been reminded that we've got artists, musicians, and writers who live right here in Wood Creek. Wouldn't that be nice to acknowledge? Have a have a have a showing of art over at the camp or something like that. Something kind of nice and elegant, or something really local. And that'd be a lot of fun, too. Okay, naming events. Now, all foundations do this. Benches, need a bench over at one of the parks, we can raise money, Joe could hire his bench. Need a men's or ladies room over at the park, somebody else's name goes on. But I mean, there's a million and one things that we could use in town, but we don't have to drain the taxpayer for those things, it may not be top, top, top priorities. New trees, naming a tree to replace old trees, kind of, I talked to Joe Gambino about that, and he kind of likes that idea a lot. Arrest, exercise, and meagre stop for seniors who walk. I got this suggestion directly from some of the senior residents here, in terms of, well, you know, just came up in a conversation about about trails and things that we've been talking for a while. I know a community person, Heinz has been very much in favor of that kind of thing. And we want to work here on that idea, it's a fabulous idea, but people walk, they don't necessarily jog or do bikes. It's the one thing that really hip communities do is to set up rest centers for walkers, not to lift weights, you know, not to kind of chill out and meagre, you become meagre locations. And so that could be the kind of project I think would be a nice activity for us to think about. Where the what, where we put this, be figured out. It'd be nice to put something like this over on the south side of town, where we're kind of underdeveloped in terms of public land. But we guys work out those details. A final idea is a nature something. And if you ask people, what can we do as a nature activity here in Wood Creek, I get 5,000 suggestions. Everybody's got an idea. Either on private or public land, that'd be an interesting decision to make. But the example that comes to my mind is the birdhouse camera, something I'm going to try to work on early. My daughter and son-in-law in Virginia, they live in the middle of the trees down there, right? They they got this birdhouse that's got a video camera in it, so on your cell phone, you can watch what's going on inside the birdhouse. Moms and baby birdies and eggs hatching, all kinds of stuff. I know some people, my generation loves to sit home and watch that and do that. They're not super expensive, but it'd be nice to put up, you're going to have private property here. That would be one of the advantages maybe of this foundation doing it. Okay? And that's just a list of what's going on. I'm taking too much time. What what I want to make real clear is that, again, we're not asking council for anything, but clearly we got to partner with y'all for activities, I mean, no two ways about it. It's going to be a partnership. And we'll, we'll do all we can to live up our side of the of the events, the activities. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's been a lot of work.
Any questions, can I take questions? I'm the one guy, I'm going to hang on to you. Those are going to be a lot of fun.
Looking forward to it.
Do you have a center plan? When, of course, the 501(c)(3) is going to slow things up, but something by summer or a first step, do you think?
I was terrified when someone suggested it took 12 months for them to get theirs done. And and it seems you can't predict. I was, my response, well, we're kind of small and clean and lean, maybe no difference of time, either state of Texas or IRS, IRS, or this norm and standards, basically. So no one can give me any estimate on that, neither can Kent, so got to be patient.
And we just got to get the paperwork from Kent, see where that is.
I'm sorry?
We need to get what Kent had and, you know, just sort of work from there, right? Rather than starting over from scratch, I mean, Kent already did.
Oh, yeah, all the paperwork's in.
Yeah.
Everything's in, it's been several weeks now, we got our last signature, and to be honest with you, some of that time it took from even going back to Christmas, putting that, was on me, I mean, we've got some other things to do besides just do this, unfortunately. It's also kind of slow getting some stuff together. And we were, it's it's all in.
Well, anything we can do.
There you go. And so paid for, and that's just working out real good. Okay? Anything else? I'm going to lean on you guys, not just caring.
You know, you know where we live.
I think you got a new plaque of friends of the friends. I'm going to take off.
All right.
So I'm number eight. I move to set a public hearing for council regarding updates to chapter 156.057, fences for March 27, 2024. So the motion is to set a public hearing for council regarding council updates for chapter 156.057 for March 27.
I'm just curious, we already had one public hearing, we have to have a second public hearing as well. E and Z has, E and Z has a public hearing, and then the council.
I was going to say, I hope this is as well as attended as ours.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So the timing okay on getting it done?
We can calculate.
It's close, we can do it. All right. So call roll, please.
Councilmember Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Havert.
Aye.
Councilmember Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor President Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Bailey.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
What is the date?
March 27. All right, I'm number nine. We've got nine and 10 are both back in the Texas Community Development Block Grant, and you want to speak to that.
Mayor.
Mayor rule.
Or go ahead, go ahead. I move to adopt resolution 2024-02-28-01, designating authorized signatures for the 2023 Texas Community Development Block Grant, grant agreement number CVV23-0080, applicable to the repair of Deerfield Drive. I want to simply thank the city manager and Stat for all their work on this. City manager, would you like to say anything else?
So these are requirements, I mean, they're, the block grant and the city will have the resolution for, so this is just paperwork. All right, so we've got motion, second, to adopt resolution 2024-02-28-01, designating authorized. to adopt resolution twenty twenty four, oh, two, twenty eight, oh, one, designating authorized signatories for the twenty twenty three Texas Community Block Grant Program, applicable to the repair of Deerfield Drive.
Councilmember Hammer.
Aye.
Councilmember Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Grummer.
Aye.
As you can be honest with me, we're going to make ten similar um, similar motion, right?
I move to adopt, action to adopt that motion. Item number eleven, item ten.
Okay.
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty four, oh, two, twenty eight, oh, two, adopting required community development block grant civil rights policies for grant agreement number C V V twenty three dash zero, zero, eight, zero, applicable to the repair of Deerfield Drive. Second.
Second, by councilmember Amber. Again, the motion is to adopt resolution twenty twenty four, dash, oh, two, dash, twenty eight, dash, oh, two, adopting the required community development, block grant civil rights policies for grant number C V V twenty three, dash, zero, zero, eight, zero, applicable to the repair of Deerfield. Heard of this question? A little please.
Councilmember Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammer.
Aye.
unanimously. Um, item number eleven, I know that you've been doing a lot of work on this. Um, councilmember Bailey.
Well, it's short enough for me. Um, I move to postpone this agenda item until the next meeting. If at such time, the order of forming the infrastructure and mobility panel has been reviewed by legal and placed in the proper format for approval by council.
So you're, you're just wanna take this off the agenda?
For now, and have it at the next meeting.
All right, if there's no objections, just.
I have a question, legal did review it, but I've been asked to consider another review by legal, um, to clean up the format, the my, let's, I thought we were doing it properly, well, we were back and forth on this. And so, um, we've been asked to submit the existing draft to legal again for a final clean copy.
Charlie, are you gonna call?
He did.
Yes, if I can push the right button. Can you hear me?
Okay, so, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
Can you just take another look at this?
Sure.
Okay, so if there's no objection to this.
Go ahead. Could I ask for the clarification from the city attorney?
Please, go ahead.
Um, what it is your, are you the one requesting that it go back to you?
No, I'm not.
When, when you looked at the packet, I, I, I understand that there's two.
I didn't see the packet, I didn't see the packet, and I didn't see the agenda. It wasn't provided to me.
Um, I move to amend, to in, well. Yeah.
Do you mind?
No. You're.
Right after that, on this agenda item, I noticed a real issue with the packet, and so perhaps that is the prompt uh, for this, meaning the two documents in the packet have remaining errors and issues. Uh, the first one being that the plan is titled planning and zoning, unfortunately, at the top, I don't know how that happened. It's the infrastructure mobility panel, or uh, so that's number one. Uh, also, councilmember Bailey's suggestions of two and three are not incorporated in, in either version of the document. So we do have an issue with not having the most current draft present, or a lack of those edits being there. So that is something that we do need to clean up moving forward. Also, I do know that staff has requested a change to some of the language regarding about, on that number three, and so that's kind of what I was talking about, that that doesn't mirror um, what's been requested, and so that would be a new thing for consideration beyond what was discussed in the last meeting, uh, as far as like an additional edit. Most of our attorney's edits were, you know, non-substantive, they didn't change the, the meaning and purpose of the ordinance, they cleaned up the legal language of it. The one concern I had between, um, actually leaving all the way back to our most recent discussion of the ordinance review committee ordinance, um, is that I would love for all of this language to be repetitive and mirroring each other when possible, obviously, planning and zoning as a state-regulated board will have some differences there. Um, but, so we're already deviating from that path from the ordinance review committee, which is still pending and, and meant to come back to us anyway. So I do support the concept of a touchback with the lawyer, but in regards to multiple advisory board ordinances, to make sure that we're consistent in our language governing these advisory boards and, and their behavior, specifically in regard for the things like the resignations, and some of the key, like I said, more like legal language that's in there, examples being thirty point eight, three, A, C, D, E, you know, that kind of stuff, um, G even, that was all left in the ordinance review, uh, committee ordinance, sorry, so many ordinance. Um, and I would like to see the two be mirrored, and so I was actually going to suggest we even consider hosting a workshop about the advisory boards with the attorney, so that we can kind of freely discuss some of this stuff, and then come back with a more cohesive plan moving forward about, about this language across the board with all of them. So I do support the postponing, I think it is the right call at this time, just given the fact that we don't have the appropriate document in front of us today even, so.
And I just might want to mention that also, I had, I've gone through the two documents, and I didn't see the material changes, and in my uh, agenda cover, I thought everything that was changed was actually, it was not of substance. It was um, just uh, adding some format that was, uh, it didn't change the intent. It was for synchats or conformity. So, but then I was asked to pull aside for now, uh, to give a final review by our attorney. And we have not had a, a committee for a while, so I guess there's nothing terribly pressing, and we're still short a member or two for a new board, but we are anxious to get this on, this show on the road. Members, uh, just both members are, are anxious to get started, so. But I still don't have a, a second on that.
You think?
Yeah, well.
Okay.
So, if I could, I have a question for the city attorney. As this is an amending ordinance to an existing advisory board, and the platinum panel does in fact still exist, even if council approves the adoption of this amending ordinance? Just that the duties and responsibilities have changed and the name has changed, does this mean that the current sitting members of the platinum panel do not need to go through the process of being replaced onto the rename?
Replaced or reappointed.
Reappointed?
Um, I think that depends on the policy direction of the, of, of the city council. Um, if the intent is that they, they not have to go through that process, we should make that clear, because it's not clear the way it's currently drafted. And if, if, if you do want them, if we do want to go through a reappointment process, we should make that clear. So, it's a valid point, I don't know the answer to the question, because it wasn't part of the, you know, the drafting or even mentioned in the ordinance, so I think that should be made clear on, on how you want that to be handled.
Great, my next question would be is, if we took the parks board and we made an amending um, ordinance to now commonly refer to the parks board as a super parks board, would we have to repopulate the parks board?
Well, I mean, if all you did was change the name, the answer to that question would be no. In my opinion.
Great, this is more than changing the name here.
This is adding additional.
This is a complete repeal and replace, and in the last meeting, it was discussed that we would re, repopulate the board, because it's a complete change in their duties.
It does say amend in both.
It was supposed to say, uh, repeal and replace, but another note to make, because that was something we did confirm.
Thank you. So that's a good, um, the other questions I have were, so, in the top section that now currently says planning and zoning commission, the replacing words would be platinum panel, correct? City attorney? Because what you're replacing is the platinum panel. Ordinance with the amendment following. This is, I was asking the city.
I don't think I understood, I don't think I understood the question.
You take back to Lajo and have staff. There's a number of issues like that, that we need to settle before I think it becomes before this body. And so that's why I think it'd be a good idea to, to let legal and staff
Yeah.
kind of hash this stuff out before it's presented to you for a vote.
Yeah, I think that's the general consensus.
Yes, I was just pushing to insert from my, the ideas that I saw, that they were addressed, um, Mayor Proton did realize that there was something I brought up that wasn't possibly addressed, so thank you.
And we, we haven't asked the members to resubmit.
And they have. Yeah, so we have, we have applications from, um, current members who want to stay on, um, apparently we have a, a new application, so. So that, that part of it, I don't think is gonna be really an issue, what we need is a clean ordinance. Which we can do quickly. I think, I mean, the work's been done, it's just, we've gotta get the, the, to take a look and bring it back to us, right, so, so um, again, I'm not sure, I mean, we've discussed it, though, I mean, you did make a motion, it's been spoken to, I mean, I, I would have just stricken it with no objection from the agenda and moved on, but I think under the circumstances, we um, should probably move postpone.
We were discussing the postponement, so I think we can go on.
Yeah, so basically the motion is to postpone this agenda item, refer it back to the city attorney, um, have it bring it back to council.
I can restate it.
And who should I, who should I work with to make sure I capture the policy intent of the document?
Councilmember Bailey.
And.
And Mayor Proton Hines has been working on it, Charlie.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you want me to restate this? Or Suzanne has, has a.
Good.
Okay. Move postpone the agenda item to the next meeting, if at such time the ordinance forming. The infrastructure and mobility panel has been reviewed by the legal and placed in proper format for approval by council.
Second.
Second, by councilmember Richardson.
Mayor Proton Denver Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammer.
Aye.
Councilmember Richardson. Thank you.
And I think that as long as there's no objection, we'll move forward on the agenda. There are no objection, we'll be on number thirteen. Um, which is updating on the, on the ad hoc work group from, I'm not creating a class here. On Rainwater.
I move that council names members to the ad hoc work group created October twenty twenty three, and additionally tasks this work group to obtain or prepare materials needed for applying for the L C R A grants, and to present their recommendation to council on or before May twenty second, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor, if I may.
Please.
It was previously discussed that individual members from our advisory boards would be considered for populating this wood group, wood group, work group. But in addition to reaching out to those members, I would like to discuss who on the government, governing body would like to be included in this membership. Councilmember Richardson campaigned on this topic of water conservation, and Mayor Proton Hines has already done a lot of research in this area. We could simply decide today that we appoint the leads of this work group, and let them reach out to people they might find, might think would be a good additions. I'm not officially nominating, I just wanted to present. If you wish to take it up, I think you two would be good for this.
Well, I can't stand her, so I'm gonna. Uh, I definitely do the work, we've already taught, I, I mean, part of the reason why this was ever on an agenda in the first place is because there is a group of people who has shown interest, and they do kind of cross several areas of the city. So it made sense to kind of make it a little bit more official, and streamline the efforts, so that we don't have all these boards sort of independently working and, and kind of create a more cohesive plan, so.
So the motion is to name members of the ad hoc work group created in the twenty three, um, the work group to obtain the materials needed for applying for the L C R A grant, it's very important, and present recommendations to the council before, uh, May meeting in twenty four. And seconded by Richardson. Any further discussion?
I move to amend by naming uh, councilmember Richardson and Mayor Proton Hines as the leads. And that they will further populate the work group.
Have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Proton Hines. We'll vote on the amendment, naming, um, councilmember Richardson and Mayor Proton Hines um, as leads on the ad hoc work group.
Who's your idea, so?
Well, I think you can name two.
Would, do, you don't need a name.
Ready? All right.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hammer.
Aye.
Councilmember Christie Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Denver Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Mary Bailey.
Aye.
Amendment passed unanimously, we'll move to the main motion.
There's one question before we move on.
Okay.
The, the um, intent for the L C R, L C R A grant still remains city hall rainwater, correct?
Yes, for the property, that's because it was, um, council had already previously proved that it's a rainwater harvesting system for city hall property.
Okay.
Um, and in the packet, there are grab to it, but I believe in the package, there are all the uh,
Yeah, I saw the material, I just wanted to make sure that was there in the, in the amendment statement of the law, I might have missed it, but I think even just discussing it right now kind of covers.
Okay.
The, the motion itself, um, is broad enough, so that the ad hoc group can look beyond this, this physical property. Uh, this would be the first priority.
Yeah.
Do I read that right?
Well, council had already approved the L C R A grant, means for the rainwater harvesting, but it didn't call it property.
I guess now would be a good time to provide an update of what happened there. So, uh, that grant application process didn't open for us to even view until, I think, January first. So we had no idea what was gonna be needed, I mean, there was, okay, we're gonna need a concept drawing and some clear things like that, but when they opened the application, it became very clear that we were not gonna be able to produce adequate materials in the timeline, and then January flew by also, so, and then that, like, I just really wasn't prepared by the time the deadline came up, so, uh, it was acknowledged that that deadline is like every six months. And so, you know, now we've seen it, we've seen what's needed at least. And so, you know, now we've seen it, we've seen what's needed at least. So we have a better idea of like how to prepare the application so that when it opens, we have everything ready to submit, so it was a learning curve. I'm new to grant applications, so.
Also, the really great thing about the motion that was made previously about applying for this grant, it was just applying in twenty twenty-four, so the July deadline still fits within that original motion.
Um, the main motion is still on the floor, like the vote.
Councilmember Bailey.
Hi.
Councilmember Grant.
Hi.
Councilmember Everett.
Hi.
Councilmember Richardson. Mayor Pretend Hines.
Hi.
The motion named members amended is passed, move on to number fourteen. This, um, planning and zoning commission amendment. Amending sections of Title III. Senator Brummer, thank you.
I know that council adopts amending sections of Title III Administration, Chapter Thirty, Officials, Employees and Organizations, Planning and Zoning Commission, Ordinance Twenty Twenty Four O Two Twenty Eight O Two.
Second.
Yeah, may I?
Please.
This is the final draft of the amending ordinance reviewed by the city attorney includes his recommendations of edits to the draft council sent to him. A quick summary of the recommendation recommended edits specific to planning and zoning ordinance are recommending not having alternatives for this board, only full regular members. That resignation letters go to the city secretary and the removal of required posting of forum to allow council to attend P and Z meetings. Um, if a council approves the amending ordinance today, on the next council agenda, the mayor will need to nominate the alternates to become full regular members. I have a question for the city attorney. Am I correct that those currently sitting on P and Z and were previously appointed to three-year terms still fulfill those terms as appointed?
Yes.
Thank you. And that once the amending ordinance goes into effect, it only applies to appointments made after this adoption.
Yes.
Um, there's one specific matter that why I asked those previous questions, in the current ordinance, the chair was appointed for a three-year term. So would he fulfill that three-year term? Even though the new ordinance says that, uh, chair will be annually nominated?
Uh, without it, without it, um, without that being specifically addressed in the ordinance, the answer is yes. If you would like, to begin, if you would like for the annual to begin immediately, then we should address that in the ordinance that that's what we expect to occur.
But if we're expecting him to fulfill his three-year term, the, the remainder of his three-year term, we don't have to change any of the writing in the word.
No, sir.
Thank you.
All right, any, um, further discussion? The question was second. Motion.
Second was Mayor Pretend Hines.
Okay, thank you.
My only concern remains the language around, uh, submission of resignations. Um, sorry, I'm trying to find it in here, I did not write down for myself where it was, so one second. Uh, okay, this is the accurate language according.
Can you?
So, so, uh, we're on page seventy-one, item D. Um.
Line number.
Sorry, one second, well, it's multiple line numbers, it's basically the whole paragraph. Um, so the city records management officer is the official state title. It has been suggested to consider changing that to city secretary by members of staff. I feel like that should be addressed in this moment because whatever we decide now will set a kind of like a precedence for the other ones we're looking at, so do we want to stick with city records management officer or should we suggest an amendment for city secretary?
I, I have.
Can we ask that question to the city attorney?
Well, if I could, first, we have, you know, the record that already mentions the city records management officer in any of the rest of our uh, ordinances that we have.
Uh, some of the, of the other ones that have come, the other advisory boards that we have approved, ordinances.
Have that terminology?
Yes, because the city attorney on those chose the, that wording.
Oh, so then how about if we were to change that to, to include the words otherwise known as the city secretary?
Just you ask for, if it's ever cited, it's cited all over our code, everywhere. It's the official state title for that position. So.
If that's the case, then why do you?
We, well.
I have respect for conversations with city staff, it has been broad, and so I'm.
Mr. Mayor, may I address a couple of things on that?
Go ahead.
Um, you know, we're trying to make our code more uh, readable for residents, I don't know any residents who knows who is the, um, records retention manager. They do, they do know Savannah City Secretary, this is why we suggest that it be changed to City Secretary. Also, um, staff has concerns about the forty-eight hour requirement in there. Uh, our suggestion was as administratively possible, which actually is in the state code. Um, the state does use that language instead of forty-eight hours. The reason for that is if a, um, resignation is given to us on a Saturday and let's say we have a Monday as a holiday, we would be forced, we are forced, City Secretary or the Record Management Officer is forced to, uh, check emails on ongoing basis on Monday. So for those two reasons, I would, I would hope that, or I would suggest maybe some alternate language.
City attorneys, can I get your input on the conversations had thus thus far?
Sure, um, whatever, you know, whatever, whatever language you are comfortable with. If you want a strict deadline, you should make it business days then rather than just hours, right? Um, two business days, three business days, or I'm also comfortable with the language, you know, the city manager came up with, which is, uh, you know, basically we, we put it, the burden on our, on our staff, not burden, we put the responsibility of our staff to efficiently operate their responsibilities under the law, under the code, and they do it as efficiently as possible, taking into consideration day-to-day workloads and things of that nature.
And the previous point that.
Yeah, I'm looking, I was looking to see, I'm actually looking to see, I was looking up the Texas Public Information Act to see who's designated and what term they use, because the Texas Public Information Act actually designates somebody as the, you know, person for open records requests and things of that, not necessarily records keeper, but, um, you know, every, every city I'm aware of refers that the city secretary is responsible for receiving documents for the city when it comes to resignations. Obviously, any, anytime anybody's applying to go on the ballot, those types of things universally go to the city secretary or city clerk, depending on the language used by the particular municipality.
And so when you previously had changed, I'm, I'm speaking to the city attorney, so when previously you changed the word city secretary to records management officer?
I don't think, I think that changed, if I did, it was just to be consistent with previous language, it wasn't for any policy reason.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there is a way that heavy taking it to, to say written notice to the city secretary, comma, the city records management officer period. I think councilmember Bailey first.
Well, just when we were working on the mobility ordinance, they recommended, uh, previously that the chairperson, but it recommends city secretary and city. The resignation be submitted to the city secretary and city secretary provide notice that appropriate parties, it just seemed in terms of simplification. Like manager said, no with city secretary.
Yeah, we did.
Is.
Clear, I'm going to issue an amendment and it's going to be long and I'm going to copy it into an email and give it to you as well, okay? I'm going to amend item D on page seventy-one, line seventy-three. To state, any member of the commission may resign by submitting written notice to the city secretary, comma, city records management officer. Resignation will be effective when received. Upon receipt of written notice of resignation, the city secretary shall as administratively possible, send such resignation to the mayor, the chair of planning and zoning and the commission liaison.
I second.
Second by councilmember Brummer. Now, I think that captured it pretty well. Any further discussion? Think about on the amendment.
Councilmember Richardson.
Oh, oh, yeah, sorry, go on.
And, and I'm sorry, I just, I couldn't tell where we were at in the process, so I was trying to what, find a good place to interject myself. And, because I just also, I wanted to look up chapter twenty-two of the local government code to see what it said with respect to powers and duties of the secretary. And it does say, the secretary of the municipality, um, shall take charge of, arrange and maintain the records of the governing body. So that's a specific statutory responsibility of the city secretary under state law.
I don't know that really thinks it's the amendment, no?
No.
So, who can vote on that?
Councilmember Richardson.
Hi.
Mayor Pretend Hines.
Hi.
Councilmember Bailey.
Hi.
Councilmember Grant.
Hi.
Councilmember Everett.
Hi. The amendment passes. Back to the main motion.
Councilmember Everett.
Hi.
Councilmember Richardson.
Hi.
Mayor Pretend Hines.
Hi.
Councilmember Bailey.
Hi.
Councilmember Grant.
All right, great, nice work, thank you, Carol.
Yes, thank you.
Wherever you are.
Of course.
Uh, okay, so we'll move down to, uh, the next section with this conflict consideration for agenda items. Um, I, I put something out in a recent email, it was something that we were looking at this, about, because it's something that, um, that is uh, that city manager didn't work in other cities. Um, believe that the city attorney said that same work in other cities, and it's taking time at the, for the end of the segment, so I hear some, here's some things that we're working on that I want to see in a future agenda, um, and so, um, you know, it, it, until we get this like detailed work out on this, I mean, it's, it's a request. Um, not a policy, it's not, it's not written as policy, but, um, if you have, if you have something that you want to go on the next agenda or a future agenda, you can, can give us the, the gist of it. Um, if it, if a member of council, that, in other words, yeah, I think, I think that's a good thing, we should work on that. Then it doesn't require a vote, it's just a, um, basically a suggestion and a, and a second, and it will be on the agenda. It doesn't mean you still don't have to submit it as an agenda item. And with everything that goes into it, it just sort of gives a chance that it, that's got sort of the future things we're working on while we're in open meeting. Um, and part of the reasoning for this is that with, without it, we've had a few instances where, um, uh, council members submit the same or competing motions on the same item and it gets confusing. Um, and in fact, um, has been, has been sort of an issue a couple of times in the past where it got a little sticky. So we think this will help clear up some of that. Um, our policy remains that, you know, if you have something that, that you want to put on the agenda, um, you put it on the agenda, and I don't think that, that, I mean, if it's a well-thought-out, um, program that we're trying to work on that you're having trouble getting some of it, we else to say, yeah, I think it's a good idea. Um, but anyway, that's, that's what the section of the, of the meetings will be, if we work out the details on it, we'll talk about it. Go ahead.
Um, first, I'd like, there's, there's three things I'm considering right now, um, the development of the community wildfire protection plan, which is the property whereby a community collaboratively seeks to clarify and prioritize actions that will protect life, property and infrastructure from the wild fire. Um, given the recent droughts, um, there's also the big fires going on currently in the Panhandle of Texas. Um, there's also grants available through the Texas Wildlife Risk Grant. Um, the next thing I'm going to actually propose is, is actually on behalf of the mayor, um, the mayor will have an item to make nominations for the alternates to become full regular voting members.
I actually had that one ready.
And, um.
For P G.
For P G. And, um, the tree board ordinance addressing terms and structure as council has been doing to help standardize and clarify language across all advisory boards.
Yes, a second.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Second, second, second.
I would like to request the workshop that I discussed where we have our advisory board ordinances come before us that we, um, I know that in passing P and Z, we've just sort of set that precedence for most of them, but I would like for us to kind of look at them all together at once and just, um, you know, make sure all those documents are edited, we have the fresh ones in front of us so that when they come before us again, it's clean.
I second you. So, yeah, it's a good idea.
So much out to compare.
It's uniformity among all commissions regarding our, uh, the, the candidates and, and the process that we have with all of those in each mission, so it's the same. When you originally brought it up, it, we would want to make sure that workshop occurred at a time when the city attorney can be here and, and be a part of that discussion.
And so to clarify, would we be looking at the ones we recently already passed?
Well, I believe that we have not officially passed anything other than the P and Z at this point in time because my memory tells me that ordinance review commission was actually due to come back because there were significant edits made in, in the meeting and so we needed the final draft to be seen. So that one's still waiting in the wing, you know, P and Z will set the precedent now for many that follow, but there's deviations in P and Z that do not correspond with the other ones, so we're looking at O R C, um, the infrastructure mobility panel as updated, and then, you, you know, we would look at the tree board and parks as well to ensure that we have continent continuity in all of that language, marrying what we've already done with P and Z.
Good move. Um, and then there was I, I mean, I had written down mobility and, um, infrastructure ordinance, but that's would be part of the workshop, we'll move into that, so we'll fit that one back up again.
I have a question, in regards to like known pending business. That would not apply here, this is for newness, correct? Okay.
Other areas for consideration? I understand.
You know, just a question about the process. Um, so an idea was presented, but it needs to be seconded, right? And if it's not seconded, that idea will not go onto the agenda.
Yeah, so, so if, if I came up with, uh, with a proposal to put a trampoline in the parking lot, um, and everybody goes, I, I don't, I don't think so, and so it doesn't receive a second, then I go, okay, fine, so I go back to the drawing board, and so, well, we don't put it in the parking lot, we put it over, over there and bring that back for a future, for a future, so that's the way I look at it, so this is like a pre-motion, right?
Can I clarify something now?
Yeah.
Yeah, mine is, I'm sorry, it's too, um, so the, the part of the second is the part where I see the whole, this announcement break down in that we already have a standing ordinance that kept whatever council submits to an agenda, they will show up on the agenda, so for us to tell, to pay attention to your question, if you brought something forward and it didn't get a second, you still have the power and rights to place it on the agenda. It's kind of a touching stone, it's like, hey, does anyone want to take this up? And if we're all kind of like, you know, then you might go, well, no, I still want to do it, and you still.
But then it's nice about this, we can open, we've talked about it enough. The thing that's nice about this is we can open, we talked about it in open session.
Yeah.
And just say.
Well, here's what my, my thinking, and I did look up that if you make a second to something, it doesn't mean you're approving of it, it just means you want to see it aired. But I thought.
More of the discussion.
So if I, I have an idea I want to submit. So I think, well, I better make sure about a second. So I talk to another council member and say, are you going to second this? But then if they say no, then I might have to go to another council, and then I walk before, so I wanted to move forward with that.
So that's why you don't talk about it in advance, you talk about it soon.
But I still want a second, but what you're saying is that.
Regardless, you still have these rights by policy, yeah.
Right.
Go ahead.
To clarify all of this, none of this changes existing policy. Which is what council member governor strangers already did explain. Um, this is not altering that. Our council resolution and how our meetings and agendas happen is passed. That's it, that's the rule. What the attempt of this was, was to. As Mayor Ransko pointed out, help clean up some of our processes. And the point where I supported this in discussion with city manager rule was the concept of if we put something on an agenda as a council member. We have potentially less than a week to prepare if we are not the council member who submitted it, or the council member who worked with it. So you're at a disadvantage, especially on topics that take in-depth research. And the public is also at a disadvantage because our, our public notice is so short right now, right? We're getting agendas out Friday before, you know, if, you gotta remember to look at it and you gotta remember to do your research and show, I mean, you've got such a short time to respond. Everybody, even staff, right? To have staff and legal prepare for things at times is just too short of a turnaround. So this would extend that ability for people to understand about what's coming down the pipeline and have more time to prepare and submit. Now, the goal of trying it on like it's a pair of pants tonight is to see where we need to take out the seams of it. Or make, you know, you've already brought up, okay, this is a procedural concern, what happens if I don't get a second? You know, can I still submit it? Well, right now you can't. Down the line, we might develop a new procedural resolution document that addresses the agenda submissions particularly. And this process is more flushed out, and that could come before council, and you would all have the chance to have your questions, concerns, all of that addressed. Put into the document and cleaned up. But this is literally us just, you know, in Dillard's trying on a pair of pants.
And what I do agree with completely is that this gives us, if an idea is put forward, now I've got time to research it.
Correct.
It's someone else's item, but instead of just having two or three days. I guess I could have come down and looked at the board, but no, that's.
And, and to, to your point, I mean, if, if we, if we go through this a couple of times, work kinks out. Um, then we rewrite that, that resolution and, you know, add the structure to it. I mean, one of the things that came out of the retreat was, you know, we just need to really focus on policies and procedures, we need to have that. You know, that playbook, you know, in, in place that, you know, explains how these things go down. This is the one, you know, policy that we have that regulates how council operates, how council puts things on the agenda, how council meetings go. So this would be a slight change to that, so we would need to amend that resolution and bring it back when the time is, as, as it stands right now. You know, we can't say it's policy, it's a nice procedure that we're gonna try to follow and see how it works, and, and. And if we do, then we'll just clarify it. All right, so any other, any other things that anybody, if they want to bring to the. Future agenda, the, the, the agenda form is posted, it's out there, has everybody seen it, I mean. Did it get out? I think it, okay, so. Nobody, I don't know if anybody's, I actually haven't looked to see if anybody's submitted anything. Um, but feel free to. All right, well, last time I'm on the agenda, I'd already sort of said something about a preacher to the Liberty Valley. Over March third, three thirty, I strongly encourage your attendance. Um, and let's show up, I'm gonna, I think, like to get this out on social media as well and just sort of encourage. Um, would create to, to attend, but this is about us too. Um, and, and enjoy some good, good fun. And I would accept that motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we are. The, by. Good work.